There was three sites, Ferndale, Maple and Woodward, and this site. We looked at doing all three and we were excited about doing the idea of retail first floor, then the residential for the four stores. The cost of doing this is just, you can't lease them out. For what the market is, you'd have to be a dollar a square foot a month over what the market is for residential living on all three of the sites. All three were basically the same type of, we wanted to do all three of them at the same time, and it's just, it just doesn't work. Trying to develop condos to sell is, I don't know when that market will come back. I don't think, I don't think for a long time that it'll come back to where it was when Monarch was, the idea for the Monarch was developed. It's just not there. And not even, even if we had the cash to do this, it's cost prohibitive, but to do it and try to borrow money doing it is just, I know economics are not supposed to be a part of this agenda, but it truly takes a front seat to what we try to do today. It's challenging.
Mr. Graham?
Is my, are my slides available? I had some suggestions, Mr. Jonah, and I'm just gonna stand up and point because I don't have a pointer thing. Yardstick would be handy, but I don't, I didn't bring one with me. But, go to the next slide. Okay, this is, this is your existing, and what I find, well, first of all, I want to congratulate you on purchasing the property and going up there. I've looked at, I live just down the street, I mean, I'm, I live on Alpine.
Oh, that's great.
And I'm the second house north of all those vacant weed-filled lots, and I've looked at that for over seven years, and it's really, I feel excited that you're in it because I've known, I don't know, is your brother a cousin, Gary?
Gary is, his dad is my first cousin, what does that make, second cousins?
You know, the reputation of family is just impeccable. I just, I'm glad that you're the person that's gonna be developing this.
Thank you.
But, if you can go to the next slide, please. What I wanted to do was not have all those cars dump onto my street, and again, it's not south, it's just me, but I'm talking about neighbors that have been there for over 50 years. And what I thought we could use, just flip it. Again, I, it's just conceptual, it's not our.
We actually looked at that, and the reason why we did it on the other side, in fact, Flagstar Bank would love to have this. I think they'd pay a lot more to do that. The reason we did it on the other side was to screen the drive-throughs from the exposure. You've got the westbound traffic that is where all the exposure is to driving it, and on our, in our layout, it would just, it would screen it that much more.
I understand, yes, the building would screen.
Exactly.
Right. But I think, again, landscaping, you can soften it enough. And the idea is it doesn't dump directly onto Big Beaver. I know, you know, it's very close, and I don't know how many feet that is away, but the idea, my thought was, okay, we're not dumping traffic right into Big Beaver, but this is taking that, that all those three, three lanes probably proposed of banking, and I don't know how heavy that's gonna be, nobody does at this point, but from other banks that I frequent on Big Beaver, at times, they can get backed up a bit.
The second problem you have with doing it that way, drive-throughs have to have access from the driver's side, where this, if you're driving, if you're south, you're actually on the wrong side of...
Yeah, I see that.
The window.
I understand that part, you're right. Again, maybe we can flip back, again, I'm not, you know, there are...
No, no, I mean, that's why I'm here.
In that side. I didn't go through all the studies that could possibly, but I, that's a good point. It should be the other way around. If you go to the next slide, okay, what you've got now, you're adding four curb cuts or traffic lanes into Alpine Residential Street, and there's one already on McClure, and you're adding another one. What I'm saying is, yeah, we've gotta manage this better, we can't just have Alpine taking the load. If you go to the next slide, please. And what I, what I'd like to see is sharing it between the two streets, two and two. I realize the T blocks that traffic off, but again, I, I've got, like I mentioned earlier, the other gentleman's up here, he did a video when the Monarch was up, and semi-staged, I had four of my neighbors try to get out onto Big Beaver during rush hour. And then all, there were other cars that just naturally came up from other neighbors and other people, and it became anywhere, like I said, between one and five minutes. I don't want to see that happening, and I'll go to another slide in a minute to explain another way to handle this, but this is just one solution, and the other thing was to have, the setback's only 30 feet to that next property. Now, right now, that's a vacant lot on the Alpine side. On the McClure side, there's another house there. And I realize, okay, so these are, each of those lots, existing lots now, there's three of them on each side, that's 120 times three is 360 feet. What I'm saying is, if we can bring, the original putt had a 120-foot berm. I'm asking, and the distance between all the building, all the homes, and the back of the property is roughly 200 feet on all those houses north of here. I'm just asking if we can make that a bigger distance between the back of the house, in other words, that it, that just makes a bigger backyard. It's not, it's not private, it doesn't become city property or berm that's city-owned or anything like the original putt. This is just be a bigger backyard for those people. And if you add up the numbers, you've got, the lots will be 100-foot deep, 60-foot road, and 100-foot for that backyard. It's not undoable, I mean, it's within the realm of reality. Or if we could just have six homes, you could develop six great homes on the existing six lots, that'd be fine, too. Okay, the next slide, please. Traffic, and that's the other big issue I have. What I have, what I've shown here, this is, all those little dots are on Big Beaver Road. This is Coolidge, and that vertical line is Crooks Road. And the existing streetlights we have now are in the yellows plus the green. Now, the green is a special case, that's usually used just for the fire department. On occasion, I've seen that light actually change when the fire department isn't there. I don't know if it's some kind of sporadic thing, or it just gets triggered every so often. But basically, that's always green for Big Beaver, this light right here. And so, between Crooks and Lakeview, which is roughly three-quarters a mile, there's no stopping of traffic, and we're trying to make Big Beaver walkable. And for the people on that side, especially, let's say, your new housing, your new residents that move in, if you want to get over to this side, the south side of Big Beaver, which we have some nice restaurants on, it's, you know, you're running, you're running really three lanes of 45 mile an hour traffic and no way to get across. So, what I'm proposing is a traffic signal at this point. I realize it's not your purview right now, it'd be the county that'd be working on that, but, and if you go to the next slide, I can detail a little bit better. What I, what I think we can offer is another traffic signal that would help the traffic getting out of your complex onto Alpine, and create a pedestrian walk to get across from the north to the south, some kind of a walkable, it's roughly midway, it doesn't show it right here in this slide, but it's roughly halfway between Crooks and that Lake, you know, Lakeview Road. So, that's something I would like to see also, and then one more slide, please. And I showed another alternative, so that this would stop, this would allow traffic on McClure, on McClure to come up, please stop at that point. So, those are just a couple of suggestions I had, to make it, first, a more walkable community, and two, make it more, taking consideration the neighborhood to the north, really. The other brief comment I'd like to make is, I really concur with the city staff assessment of the project. I'd like to see a little more creativity in the stores themselves, maybe, maybe three-dimensionally bring some back, put in a piece of art like they suggested, or a minor fountain. You know, we've got your neighbors down the street, which are big guys, I mean, it's like you're looking at Bank of America, they got gorgeous fountain, very distinctive architecture, it's like a pyramid, all black granite, and then you've got, of course, Somerset Collection, which is very distinctive architecture. I would like to see, I looked at your project right now, this is a schematic you're proposing. I didn't look at it as, this is the architectural finishes, this is the end result, and being a designer myself, I, I really, I don't like people to make judgments on something I'm doing when I'm just laying out basically a schematic. And I feel that your project at this point is more of a schematic, you're looking for feedback, that's why I didn't want to get too critical on the architecture, the design of the buildings, but I'd like to see something more dimensional, something more exciting. We've got exciting things coming to Big Beaver, we've got Granite City, we've got Ocean Prime. These are distinctive buildings, and I'd like to see some of that stuff thrown into your project. That's it.
Thank you. If I may, address a couple of the items. The size of the lots, I don't do resident, I don't do homes. We, I've brought in a home builder, home developer builder that's done a lot of work in this community. Excuse him for not coming tonight, his son's basketball banquet was going on, and I told him, I said, "You, you do what you, you do that." I believe it was the size of the homes that, and he'll address the size of the lots, and as far as the size of the homes, he's got a product that has worked for him here in the city, and I've let him, I'm partnering up with him, and I'm letting the home builder do what home builders do. You know, and he, he wanted that particular size so that he could fit the size home, three-car garage, what he feels sells. And he, he very strongly felt about how, what size those lots were. As far as traffic, you know, you control traffic through no right turns into Alpine, do you control it, I don't know if I would agree with the T at the end of the street to block traffic. I think that would cause that much more traffic on McClure versus Alpine. I think I would address it by not making a right turn into, onto Alpine, as opposed to dealing with, with a T at the end of the street. The two, and also out of the retail centers for sure, so that there's no, no right turn to be made out of the retail center. The design, we took a lot of time in the design of the building. We looked at all, a lot of the buildings along Big Beaver, and tried to pick the materials that were on other, the other buildings, and tried to combine to come up with something creative. This building was, I think, is very handsome. We have minimal brick, it's all stacked stone and limestone. I think that this thing will stand out with a glow as far as the architecture is concerned. And I'm always open to suggestions, because creativity, I like to think I'm creative, but every, every couple of weeks, somebody smacks me over my head and tells me, "You gotta learn some more." So, I'm very open to suggestions.
Mr. Chairman, just one other comment. When I was, yeah, I appreciate that you would cause the no right turn into the neighborhood, that's, that's laudable. But my concern is the backup of traffic that will sit on Alpine waiting to get into Big Beaver, so that no longer, the, the wait to get in is no longer one to five minutes, it becomes 10 to 15 minutes to get out of our street. That's because your traffic is now backed up and waiting also, going onto Big Beaver. That was my, my main point on that.
Yes.
Other comments? Mr. Jonah, I have a question for you. And I don't know if you can answer it, because it has to do with the residential stock. What's your market? Who are you going after to purchase one of those 16 lots?
It's a younger family that had, that's looking for a great school system, and that's the impetus behind doing what we're doing here. The home is in the 275, 300, 325 range, and it's for a younger family that, again, to use a school system. And that's what's, and can I tell you, I, when I was looking at this to acquire, we just shook our heads, what are we gonna do with these residential lots? You wouldn't believe the people that have called wanting to buy these lots. People stopped by, we had, we had a home builder stop by with a big tray from Panera Bread a couple of weeks ago, it says, "My name is so-and-so, can I please talk to you?" And it, it just opened our eyes to the need for this type of product in this market. It's very surprising to us.
I would, I guess, just like to add, are you familiar with the 2020 Visioning Study that was done a few years ago?
No, I'm not, sir.
You should, you should look at that and read that. One of the things that we're really trying to do is attract that young professional. And again, we've got a lot of housing stock, and again, I don't, I'm not seeing what you're suggesting that you're gonna have, and so I don't know what it's gonna look like, but I think, you know, look at that and see what, what's attracting the younger people these days, the young professionals, whether they're a young couple or young singles. You know, it may be something, because, again, I think you've heard some comments here, this is, this is a very prime site, and we want it to be unique. We want it to look unique, we want it to look upscale, and looking upscale doesn't always necessarily mean expensive, but good design can, you know, I think, get that across the finish line. And any other thing, I, you've heard a couple, from a couple of the commissioners, too, about the massing of the, of the frontage building. You know, looking at what we're trying to do and the form-based codes, that we've tried to integrate some of that into our new ordinance and master plan, you know, I think that needs to be strongly considered. Now, if what I'm hearing is that, you know, we can't put, we can't put residential, or we can't put office because of the market conditions or the cost, have you considered the height, maybe retail, two stories of retail? I don't know. You know, I mean, again, I guess what we're looking for you guys to do is think out of the box a little bit, and see what you can come back with as far as being a kind of a creative response to kind of the gem that is sitting right on the, on Big Beaver here, the property.
I agree 100% that this is a prime piece. That's why we bought it, and we bought it with no due diligence, and we just closed. You get opportunities like this once in a while, to be able to develop properties like this. There are limitations as far as retail is concerned. We've developed the two-story buildings, the first floor retail, the second floor office. This is, this would be prime for that. It's just the office market here is so restrictive as far as the vacancy factors, it just, it, we just did Long Lake and Woodward, and we put up a very handsome, I think, a very handsome building where the Fox and Hounds used to be. And it's been open a year as far as the retail's concerned, we've leased up, the office is just sitting there. It just, it just, it just sits there. There is so much office in the marketplace at a reduced rent, you know, you've gotta get...
We understand.
Yeah, I'm sure, I don't have to tell you, it's, it's just the condition, that's all.
All right. Any other, any thoughts, Mr. Edmonds?
Well, well, I'm somewhat disappointed, but I also did hear you say, and I, materials is, stacked limestone sounds really good, I just wish we could stack it another story high. I just was, would also ask you to at least consider, if you built this on a one-story basis right now, can you prepare the foundations that at some future point, you could add apartments or something up above?
We've actually looked at that, not with this project, but other projects, and yes, it could be done. It's, and if you don't do it today, it's almost, I can tell you, it's cost prohibitive because of what you do to the roof line and what you put on the roof, and having to remove and put that second story up, it costs more to...
Build it down.
You should tear it down and start all over again versus trying to do that.
One other question, as far as the bank property, I don't see a lot of synergy between the retail and the bank, and I assume that's, that the bank wanted its identity, that it wanted to stand alone. I guess my suggestion would be to see if you could have a little bit better integration so that those, so it doesn't look like two separate buildings, that it really does look like an entire massing along that, along between those side streets.
Mr. Bozio, the architect for the bank, is here, and I'm, I think we can work on that.
Thank you. Mr. Stratt?
Well, I'll piggyback on that. There's all kinds of things that I think that could be incorporated, we may consider at least, such as even trellis work to create the ambiance of that walkway between the two area and tying the two together, but they're really not tied together. There are other things that, I don't know, maybe the zoning ordinance is what influenced you on this, but this is a straight strip center. It has no real annulation and character to it in terms of ins or outs, and that's one of the things that I, I was wondering about is, you know, and I know maybe the zoning ordinance is what dictated this, because I know that we're trying to get zero lot line and all this kind of thing, but it just really, it really lacks a little more, as everyone's talking about, a little more interest to it. You know, little areas that we talk about walkability, and we want to have area where there may be some even benches along there, may not sit right now, but maybe in the future, people would be able to walk and sit in those areas, and that may enhance the capability of the retail center as well, and enhance the people, but it lacks the annulation.
You know, we've looked at that, let me, let me address the seating. Along the southern end, along Big Beaver, that whole area is all outdoor seating. We've created that, just in case we get a restaurant that wants the outdoor seating, but that whole, if we can turn to the landscape plan.
Yeah, I saw that.
You know, the...
I saw that, and I also saw the trees that you planted, and I don't know what size trees you're talking about, but I saw where you have your signage, too.
Well, you know, all along that, that front edge, in front, along Big Beaver, that's all outdoor seating. It's planned for outdoor seating with cuts into, to attract people to that.
But do you see how straight that line is?
Right, you know, and we look at, we look at, you know, it's a strip center, you know, it's a strip center. And when we build a building like this, you have to build it, you have to be able to build it as, you have to be able to get creative, have the ins and outs and ups and downs within the building, but you also have to create it so that it's, I don't want to, I don't know if the right word is generic, but you have to be able to use it today, and you have to be able to use it tomorrow with a different tenant in it. So, you have to build it in a way, and you have to design it in a way that it's usable from today and tomorrow, and you have to create it in a way so that you can apply different tenants and as many tenants to the use as possible, if that makes sense to you. We have to be, be able to apply, you know, if I get a 5,000-square-foot restaurant, I have to be able to have the ability to put that 5,000-square-foot restaurant in with an area for signage and an area for outdoor seating and an area for loading and unloading and all that. So, it gets a little bit tricky to be able to do, to have that creativity and to be able to apply the space for different users. I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I'm getting across.
There are three principles that Mr. Togman used in his development, which I really respect. First is the overall image of the building. If you have something that's really attractive, that's, that's the number-one rule that he had. Number two is the ability to see the sign, very important. See the sign. And number three is the ability for the merchant to be able to see the merchandise that's in there for the best or by, to actually see the merchandise. Those are the three basic principles.
He's a retailer.
Pardon me?
He's a retailer. You have to have those to be a retailer.
Yeah.
And if I'm not successful with what I do as far as retailer's concerned, it doesn't work.
Well, I'm more concerned with the number one that I mentioned, the overall image of it, because that affects us as, as planners, as a city. We're interested in, as you pointed out, this is a prime piece of property, and we'd like this to be a jewel, and that's very important for us.
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right. And, you know, you heard some of the comments here, everyone's commenting about, and of course, our consultant, so I'm just echoing what they're saying.
We're gonna look at it.
Any other comments? Mr. Savenant, what, was this just more of a dialogue with the petitioner to give them some feedback? What's...
It was intended for, it was the first presentation of the, of the concept of the design, and I think if Mr. Jonah has enough to go on, what we would like to do is come back as soon as, you know, he's heard input from the consultant, from the planning commission, and we can come back as early as in two weeks to, to see, for his response.
All right.
Move the project along.
Although this not be, may not be a submittal requirement, but I think it would go a long way if you could come back with some 3D modeling of what you're proposing, so we can actually see, other than the two-dimensional drawings, and see what, you know, help, help us see what, what you've come up with and the creative juices.
We're gonna, we're gonna work on all of them.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Mr. Schultz?
I've been quiet. This is certainly, a strip center is not what I ever envisioned on this property. Disappointed, to be perfectly honest. I would certainly prefer, as everyone else has said, I would prefer to see some height massing. I understand that residential may give you a problem, traditional office may give you a problem. I would suggest perhaps you might look at some kind of a medical office on a second floor. We seem to be get, we seem to see an awful lot of medical moving into the city of Troy. You know, if, if the building could be two-thirds two-story and one-third one-story, have some height at both ends and be lower in the middle or something, but I, I just really am not terribly happy with, as you put it, a strip center on Big Beaver Road. That was your description. Like I say, I don't, I really don't think we need sandwich shops and a cell phone store in that part of Big Beaver Road, but, you know, the market will, will dictate what ultimately goes in, but I certainly never thought we would be approving a single-story building on such a prime piece of real estate. It seems like a gross underutilization of very valuable property, and my concern is, once it's there, it's there for the next 30 or 40 or 50 years. It's never gonna be taken down and replaced.
Mr. Schultz, if I may, you don't have to twist my arm to get bulk and quantity here. I, you know, I'm a developer, the more I can fit on this property, the better it is for me. I find myself in these times retracting what I used to try to get out of properties, you know, I used to try to put as much building as possible, and today, it's almost the opposite of, because it just doesn't work, and that's the problem that we're faced with, where before, we wanted to put up as much building as possible, we would love to come in and put a two- or three- or four- or five-story building because we could make it work, and it just doesn't work today. And I personally feel... And I personally feel, in the development world, in my world, where we do these specialty centers, it's going to be a long time before that comes back. And it truly is too bad, because the monarch, I said, wow, man, look at that. But it's just, that's not going to happen for a very long time.
We're not asking for the monarch.
I know, I know.
Or I'm asking for something other than a one-story strip mall on Big Beaver Road with a bank sitting next to it.
Mr. Stratt?
Just to piggyback on that, I think that maybe the way that this is presented, maybe the height that you've got is 31 feet in a bank. That's a tall, tall structure, one-story. That is very tall. That also is a two-story structure in itself.
It is.
15-foot a story, you know. You realize that. And we understand that. It's some, I think it's something else than just the height that is missing out of this. And I can't, I just, that's my opinion. That's just where I'm coming from. The height, you've pretty much taken care of, but that's a costly, it's quite an expense for you to go up that high. And I recognize it.
I mean, the bank is only a couple, three feet higher than the rest of the...
I understand it. I see it. It's 31 feet. And the other is 28 feet or whatever it is. It's pretty high. But I still think that you need to do some interesting things with it. It's monotonous, in my opinion.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Look forward to seeing what you come back with.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda are public comments for items that are on the current agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to that? All right, seeing no one, move to item 9A, election of the vice chair. What's procedurally, Ms. Lancaster, what, how do we do this?
You would ask for nominations from the floor and make sure that person agrees that he would want to serve, and then you vote. And it's that simple, just like, all right, and then that person's vice chair.
Mr. Crent?
I've got, I'm torn between two excellent guys who've been here for a while, Don Edmonds and Phil Sanzika. Both, I think, are, you know, great speakers. They can do a fabulous job. But that's my input. It's unfortunate, there's two great people that could fill this thing, but I would vote equally to either one, but it depends on the rest.
I'll second that. That is a motion. Was that a motion?
Okay. I mean, I could flip a coin. Phil on one side, Don on the other.
Are you seconding that motion, Mr. Stratt?
If that's what it was.
And we could, and if that continues, we could just flip a coin.
Oh, I'd like to.
It's not a motion. Okay.
I do appreciate the offer and the compliment, but I would recommend, I would suggest that Mr. Edmonds be nominated for the position.
I'll second. Mr. Edmonds, then.
I was just going to suggest Mr. Sanzika, because he's certainly been here much longer than I have, and...
Senori doesn't count necessarily.
Okay, okay.
But I do thank you.
Well, okay, now, have you declined your name? Have you pulled your name out? I ask you the same question, Don. I mean, I...
No, I would be certainly honored to be the vice chair.
I think I'd rather decline at this moment.
Okay. So we have one nomination. Any others? I guess officially, we need to vote on this?
You have to vote on it, yes. And you have the one nominee, so...
So officially, I have a nomination by Mr. Sanzika, seconded by Mr. Crent to nominate Mr. Edmonds as vice chairman.
Yes.
And on the roll call, Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Stratt.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Crent.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Shepke.
Yes.
Congratulations, I think.
I think is right.
Is there any other business we have to take care of as far as that? I mean, that wraps it up? It's an automatic when the chair leaves, if the vice chair becomes a chair, so, okay.
It's part of your bylaws. We double-checked it, Brent and I, yesterday, and it's in there that you would assume the duties of chair, and you elect a new vice chair.
All right. Thank you. All right. Time for Planning Commissioner comments. And I won't start with you, Eric, because you're new, but I will come back to you. Mr. Carlisle, do you have any comments?
No. I've spoken enough tonight.
And I apologize again, Mr. Worton. Mr. Stratt?
Just wanted to make a comment. The reason why I asked for my seat to be removed or moved around, five years I've been here, is that the previous chairman used to sit back and they used to talk to the other side. And, you know, I'm a little bit kind of a youthful kind of guy. I can't hear too well to begin with, but I can't see the lips. I can't even read the lips. So I did ask, you know, I've been here for five years, ever since Mr. Schultz took over. It was five years. And I think I would like to get moved closer to the center so I can hear better.
Can we take here?
If that's all possible.
Thank you. Mr. Edmonds?
Yes. This last week, Mr. Crent and I had the opportunity to attend the 2012 Leadership Academy at East Lansing. And it was a day and a half conference on sustainable communities, something we all certainly can support. And the speakers were excellent. The content was really good. There were about 80 attendees, which is not bad in these kind of economic times. And I will try to get the link to all the presentations. I understand all the presentations are up on the Master Citizen Planner website, and I will get that to Mr. Savinon to distribute to the various commissioners.
Thank you. Mr. Shepke?
I was very hesitant to vote against Thomas Stratt's recommendations, because there's many pieces of land in Troy that are going to take a lot of give and take for them to be developed properly. And I'm just very, very protective of the neighborhoods, and I think every one of them has got to be examined very, very closely, so that residents are protected above all things. And basically, that's the average person's biggest investments in his home. And to keep the city of Troy a vibrant community, we have to make sure that these neighborhoods are protected properly. So that's the reason I kind of voted against it, but I very much favor giving special conditions, maybe out on the side street with no right-hand turn or something, but it's got to be a very exceptional case before I'd go along with it.
Okay. Mr. Schultz?
First, I'd like to welcome Eric. It's been a while since we've had a student rep, so we're looking forward to having you onboard. Congratulations to the new chair, and congratulations to the new vice chair. I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Crent?
Well, the only, I just want to just add on to what Don said about the seminar we went to. They gave, they provided some, actually, you know, stuff that's usable. It wasn't all academic. One case in point was for the, like, the handling groundwater. They had a lot of good examples, a lot of good drawings. One thing they let us know about is buffalo grass. I never heard of that before, but it only grows to four inches high, forever. It only grows to four inches high. So we've got all these lots that are full of weeds and not maintained well, or in situations where we have bile swales and other things like that. Those kind of grasses may lend to a non-mowing situation, which would save the city a lot of money if, you know... But they gave some real tidbits of information that I felt were very usable, well worth the time I spent there.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Sanzika?
Couple of things. First of all, I'd like to say that I was surprised if Mr. Maxwell resigned. I had no idea that was happening tonight. And I'd like to suggest that we put together a resolution or some sort of, something that we could present to him at some point to thank him for all the hard work he's done in his being chairman. So that's one point. Likewise, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Tagle and Mr. Edmonds for moving up ahead. I know Mr. Edmonds has put a lot of time and effort into his study, the planning, and I wish I had the opportunity to do that, to spend more time on doing that, and I hope to at some point. But Mr. Edmonds does deserve to be vice chair, and congratulations to Mr. Tagle for moving ahead. The other point I wanted to bring up is, I can see the concern of the developers, you know, you have this property, and the market isn't there to develop the property to what our vision is, to what our goal is. And I can see how frustrating it is. And I know we, our goals and our ideals and our plans are very high. And, you know, and the only thing that really came to mind was when we were looking at the property across from the Summer Place Mall for the old Kmart site when Mr. Saka was here. And he said, well, these are just cartoons. You know, I can't build this. And I think, I'm sure everyone recalls, we were really disappointed at that time when he mentioned that. But, you know, at some point, the market's going to get better. And I really applaud the Planning Commission for holding their ground and having high standards. And I think we need to do that. And for, to be able to back down on what we feel and what a vision is, I think is really, wouldn't be appropriate. So I really applaud the Planning Commission on their goals and their values. And I hope, you know, that the market isn't going to drive this development to have something less than what we feel it should be developed on our jewel at Big Beaver and Coolidge. But thank you again, and congratulations to the new chair and vice chair.
And thank you, and thank you for your comments. I think they're right on. Mr. Savinon?
Ben had a lot of heavy lifting tonight, and he did a great job. John, baptism of fire, another excellent job. Mr. Stratt, I've already sent your request to the person who sets the room up to get you closer to the chairman. I just sent an email two minutes ago. And we will be more aggressive on getting the cut sheets for the lighting in front of the Planning Commission when the package gets out. Ben, make a note of that. The two of us together should be able to have that covered. And welcome, Eric.
Thank you. Ms. Lancaster?
Just to say that I'm glad to be here, and I'll be here for a little while, and good to see those of you that I remember from last time, and all you new ones, congratulations. I bet Mr. Edmonds didn't realize he was going to be vice chair when he left tonight, but that's why you come to these meetings. There's obvious surprises.
Welcome back. Yes, it's good to have you back. Kathy, do you have anything? No. Well, Eric, as you see, we go around at the end of the meeting and just have, some have comments, some don't. I would, again, like to welcome you. I hope you will find the experience entertaining and educational. And if you have anything to say, please feel free.
I just want to say that after observing today, I think it is interesting. I didn't speak today, I was just trying to soak everything in and understand what goes on at the meetings. But it's definitely interesting, and I just want to thank all of you for welcoming me so warmly.
Well, you're more than welcome. Look forward to seeing you here again. Phil, just to follow up on what you were saying about Mark, I did have a conversation with him on Friday and discussed in depth his desire to continue to work with us. Now, Mark has presented some ideas just last study session about how he'd like to continue to help promote economic development within the city. And he asked if it would be all right if, on occasion, he would come back and address the commission and see what we could do together. So certainly, we will see him again. And as far as a letter of appreciation, that's already in the works. Tentatively, he will be here at the next study session meeting in two weeks. So that would, we hope if he's here, we'll give him the letter at that point. Is that, is that schedule going to work, Crent?
Yeah, I sent an email to Cindy Stewart today, and it was at the end of the day. Haven't got a response yet.
Okay.
But that's the plan.
And I want to thank you all for your support, and onward and upward. This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.